Please rise, ladies and gentlemen. The 16 Sanggunyang Palalawigan is now convened for its 27th regular session. The senior, the honorable senior board member, Mark Julius Picaballes, presiding.
Good morning po sa mga kasamahan natin sa 16 Sanggunyang Palalawigan. Dahil po ang ating Honorable Vice-Governor has engaged in an important matter but will join us shortly, I will be presiding momentarily. And with that, the 27th regular session of the 16 Sanggunyang Palalawigan is now called order. May I request Bokal Mercy Hano of the second district of the municipal of Santa Cruz to please lead the invocation?
Sa ngalan ng amahang na anak, ng Espiritu Santo, Amin. Ang mga kapangyarihan, maraming maraming salamat sa umagang ito, na kami ay iyong nasakaganapan, na kami lahat na nandirito ngayon, ay isang humihinga, still kicking in the life. Lord, thank you for everything, the life that we have, that we have, that you have given to us. Godfather, thank you for allowing us today to gather and be able to share our knowledge and time with one another in this season. We pray that you would deepen our comprehension, broaden our thinking and guide us in the understanding of what we are able to discuss today. Bless our colleagues and endorse us, skills needed and cope with the challenges imposed upon us by our positions in the public service. We may you bestow our blessings so that we may be able to perform our roles and responsibilities in the spirit of our love and generosity. At maraming maraming salamat din, Lord, na sa araw na ito, ay binigyan mo pa ako ng isang mahalagang bagay, mahalagang buhay sa araw na ito. At ito po, hindi na po nating kailangan kung ano ang numero ng ating edad, kung hindi, ang nadun ang ingredient ng pagmamahal sa bawat isa na galing po sa puso ni Bokal Mercy Riego Hano. At sa inyo pong lahat, Lord, maraming maraming salamat sa blessings, sa aming, sa katalinohan ng ating mga kasamahan, sa kalakasan ng katawan na ibinigay rin po ng ninyo sa akin, ang mapahaba pa ng kaunti ang ating buhay. So, ang lahat po ng ito, ang dinadalangin ko na bigyan pa ng mahabang lakas ang lahat na nandirito ngayon sa kanilang katawan. Lord, thank you, thank you, thank you for everything. Sa ngalan ng ama, ng anak at ng Espiritu Santo, Amin.
And please remain standing for the national anthem, the Marinduke March, and of course, the board members free to be led by Honorable Bernardine E. Office Mercado.
Wayang pagilim, meron na silang atan, alang ng puso sa likod ng mayay, lupang hilig, tulad ka ng pagilim, sa manutupi, kita pa si Lili, sa lalang ku, sa sila, sa kahit ano pa, sa lalang ku, daan na ku, sa pantay ni Lili, at sa nakaw na ku, ay kahit ano pa, ay kahit ano, tuti ka pa, ay kahit ano pa, ay kahit ano, lupang ah, 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 ay kahit ano, ay kahit ano, ay kahit ano, sa luwag, ang ikaw, ay kahit ano pa, ay kahit ano, sa lalang ku, daan na ku, sa pantay ni Lili,
Ya Bol. Marinduke. Kala niya sa kasa. Bol, higay ni Batala, banga bagot, mo kahaluma, tayo manais sa kanya, iya ba, niya, ka pa diba, ay kahit ano, ka ri kasa, ay kahit ano, ka ri kasa, ida talaga, do't pa pa, ay kahit ano, ka ri kasa, lupang ya mani, lupang iya, ay, kimukha ni, kasalino, ay, kimali, ay kahit ano, ay kahit ano, ang ilu, kay, ay, kahit ano, ay kahit ano, ah, ay, kahit ano, ay kahit ano, ang sino mas ali, ay malaman, ay kahit ano, matatagka, sa puso, kasi, kahit ano, ay kahit ano, ay kahit ano, ay kahit ano, ang sumagana, ang lumakila, oh, marinduke, ay, kahit ano, ay kahit ano, ay, kahit ano, ah, ay, kahit ano, ay kahit ano, ang sino mas ali, ay malaman, ay kahit ano, matatagka, sa puso, kasi, kahit ano, ay kahit ano, ay kahit ano, ay kahit ano, ang sumagana, ang lumakila, oh, marinduke, ay, kahit ano,
Please raise our right hand. BBML tribe, I am a provincial board member.
Provincial board member.
Given the mandate to serve.
Given the mandate to serve.
My constituency through responsible.
Through my constituency, through responsible.
Expensive and effective legislation.
Expensive and effective legislation.
Provide dynamic leadership.
Provide dynamic leadership.
Promote and maximize the delivery of basic services.
Promote and maximize the delivery of.
For the general welfare.
For the general welfare.
Under a regime of a truly consultative and participative democracy.
Under a regime of a truly consultative and participative democracy.
I impose upon myself.
I impose upon myself.
The supreme obligation to perform.
The supreme obligation to perform.
And carry out the functions prescribed by law.
And carry out the functions prescribed by law.
Unselfishly and with utmost dedication.
Unselfishly and with utmost dedication.
Thereby becoming a genuine catalyst of change.
Thereby becoming a genuine catalyst of change.
In my locality, in our nation.
In my locality, in our nation.
Mister Secretary Kalini Caldero.
Honorable Aurelio J. Leva III, Honorable Antonio El Mangookang III, Honorable Bernardine Office Mercado, Honorable Melgabal Aren Cabo, Honorable Mercedes Ariano, Honorable Danilo Arred, Honorable Ishmael Dipilim, Honorable Jose Neral El Mangol, Honorable Valdomero El Limpiada, Honorable Loren Arrosales. Mister Presiding Officer, with nine members of the board present, we have the necessary quorum for this morning's session.
Thank you, Mister Secretary. There being a quorum, we now proceed with today's session. I give the floor to our majority floor leader, Bokal Jojo Leva.
Thank you very much, Mister Presiding Officer. Mister Presiding Officer, for the reading and adoption of the minutes of the previous session dated January 27, 2023, I move that we dispense with the reading of the minutes of the previous session and consider the same as having been read without prejudice to the amendments, clarifications, and corrections to be entered into by the members of the board. I so move.
There's a motion from Bokal Jojo Leva for the, to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the previous session without, without prejudice to any corrections or entries to the said minutes. Is there any second to the motion? Julie seconded, and there being no objection, said motion is hereby approved.
Mister Presiding Officer, may I, may we invite members of the board who have some matters or have some corrections and amendments to the session, to the minutes of the session dated January 27, 2023?
Inviting any member of the board who may have any corrections or matters arising from the minutes of the previous session? There being none, Mister Majority Floor Leader, you may now proceed.
Mister Presiding Officer, may I move that we approve, we adopt and approve the minutes of the 26th regular session of the 16 Sanggunyang Palalawigan dated January 27, 2023? I so move.
There's a motion from Bokal Jojo Leva for the approval of the minutes of the previous session dated January 27, 2023. Is there any second to the motion? Julie seconded by Bokal Didi Office Mercado. There being no objection, the said motion is hereby approved.
Mister Presiding Officer, for the matters arising from the minutes, inviting members of the board who have some matters arising from the previously adopted minutes of the session.
Inviting any member of the board who may have any matters or questions arising from the minutes of the previous session? There being none, Mister Majority Floor Leader, you may now proceed.
Mister Presiding Officer, before we close the matters arising from the minutes, I would like just to put on record that we have invited the third placer of the board exam in the last professional board teachers exam. Unfortunately, Mister Presiding Officer, he cannot come because he was already assigned in Mindanao by the Carbalita Review Center. So, we will just give the award or the resolution of recognition to him through the secretariat for the formation of the board.
Well noted po, Mister Majority Floor Leader. Mister Secretary Kalini, take note of the suggestion of Bokal Jojo Leva.
Mister Presiding Officer, we now go to the approval amendment of the agenda. For the privileged speech, we have one privileged speech to be rendered by the Honorable Valdomero El Limpiada. For the question hour, we have invited Attorney Shermela C. Estipona, public attorney one of the provincial attorney's office, and with regards to her request for the grant of financial support in the form of monthly honorarium as public attorney. We have, for the messages and correspondence from the governor, we have four items. For the communications and petitions, we have three items. For the municipal ordinances, for the review of the board, we have three items and various sub items. For the proposed ordinance, we don't have any. For the proposed resolution, we have two items. For the committee reports, Mister Presiding Officer, we would like to move, I would like to move that the item number four be, item number four as manifested in this committee, in this agenda be deleted, as well as item number nine, with regards to the children with special needs. So, Mister Presiding Officer, I move that we adopt today's agenda as amended.
There's a motion from Bokal Jojo Leva for the adoption of today's agenda as amended. Is there any second to the motion? Julie seconded, there being no objection, the said motion is hereby approved.
Mister Presiding Officer, I move for the suspension of the rules to give way first to the question hour.
The rules are now, are hereby suspended.
Mister Presiding Officer, in today's session, at the question hour, we have invited Attorney Shermela C. Estipona, public attorney one of the provincial attorney's office to introduce herself as the new public attorney in the office of the office of the provincial attorney's office.
Recognizing.
Ask that to recognize Attorney Shermela C. Estipona.
Recognizing Attorney Shermela C. Estipona, the new public attorney one, provincial attorney's office. Good morning po, Attorney, and uh...
Hello, good morning, everyone. I am Attorney Shermela Estipona, the newly assigned public attorney one in the province of Marinduke. I am from the province of Ramblon, Ramblonpo.
Ah, good morning po, Attorney. Uh, as per your request po ni Bokal Jojo Leva, nung uli, pakitatagal daw po 'yung face mask.
Last time po kasi nasabihan na.
Madam Presiding Officer, the parliamentary status is that we are in the question hour and we have the, with that, Attorney Shermela C. Estipona, public attorney one of the provincial attorney's office. May I ask that she be recognized, Madam Presiding Officer?
Thank you, Honorable Leva, but before that, the Presiding Officer wished to extend my thanks to Honorable Caballes for serving as a Presiding Officer pretempore and also for everyone for opening the session just on time. Thank you to our floor leader. The, our guest, Attorney Estipona is recognized.
Again, let me introduce myself. I am, good morning, everyone. I am Attorney Shermela C. Estipona and I am the newly appointed Public Attorney's Office assigned in your province, in your, or may I say, our province, province of Marinduke. And I am from, I am from, I am a native of province of Ramblon. And actually and honestly again, I requested the central office of the public attorney's office to be assigned in our province. However, they given me a choice either to choose Marinduke, Palawan, Coron Palawan, and Enido Palawan, and Mindoro. However, I chose your province because I know that this is a peaceful and the people here are kind and humble and, yun nga, totoo ka talaga. Thank you. Thank you. I promise everyone and I'm assuring everyone that I will be serving your community and our community to the best of my ability po. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney. And any other message for Attorney Estipona?
Wala na po akong maitatanong. Baka po si Attorney Maki eh.
Attorney Caballes may have remarks for our guest?
Good morning po, to our honorable Presiding Officer and to our honored guest. Tayo po ay nakapag-usap at nakapag-ito po kasama ang Committee of Appropriations, Committee of Appropriations last week. So, wala po sabihin na congrats and baga marindima po kayo, native ng Marinduke. Alam po namin na malaki po 'yung matulung ninyo sa mga kababayan natin, namin, or natin, dito sa probinsya. At kung ano man po 'yung matulung namin, except sa dagdag sa halawang sulit. Sana po ay, huwag po kayo mahiyan lumapit sa'kin.
Yes po.
Thank you po.
Yes po, thank you so much and good morning.
Hindi lang, baka ano ko lang, Madam Presiding Officer, kasi para tirati tuwing question hour, marami tayong pumupunta dito nanghihingi ng sulisit sa beauty contest. Baka hindi kaya dun yun o talagang sa honorarium?
Honorarium po, or sa honorarium. Mas gusto po natin magserbisyo publiko po.
Okay, talagang si, si, Bokal Leva, parang kakaiba ang iyong mga pananalita ngayong araw na ito. So, kung wala na, sa bahagi ng Presiding Officer, Attorney Estipona, kami na may nagkaroon ng pagkakataon din na magkakwentuhan ni Attorney during her visit to my office last week, during the previous week, and we had a good talk. Maraming skagaya po ng kanilang binanggit, maraming salamat because during that very short period of conversation, naramdaman ko ang totoong malasakit mo sa serbisyo publiko at ang iyong pagkalinga at pagmamalasakit sa lalawigan ng Marinduke. Rest assured, na ang Sanggunyang Palalawigan, sa pamuno ng inyong lingkod, kasama ang ating mga kasama, gayon din ang pamahalang palalawigan in general, led by our governor, will always consider Pau as our effective partners. At yun pong inyong niri-request, ay alam ko po na hindi ho mahabang tala kayan yan. Yeah, that is something that is due to you with all the services that you are giving. Maliit lang ho ang lalawigan ng Marinduke, mababa ang classification for now. Although, we are very confident that very soon, the classification of the province will be improved. Alam kong maliit lang, ang konting assistance na maibigay namin, financial assistance na maibigay namin sa inyo, but it came, it's coming from the heart. And also, what is more important, I think, is our recognition na kayo po ay aming katuwang. Whatever assistance pa na pwede naming ibigay in as much as we can and in as much as we can afford, rest assured that your office will not be, will not be disappointed. Yes, Honorable Leva?
Ah, Madam Presiding Officer, tayo ay pinapanood ng ating mga kababayan at mas maganda marahil malaman kung saang bayan na ka-assigned si Attorney Estipona at ano ang mga serbisyo ipinakakaluob ng public attorney's office or ng kanyang position bilang public attorney one.
Yes, please Attorney Estipona, for some clarification. And we, we will be aired through Marinduke News Network po kasi and kindly make sure that the information that will be shared by Attorney Estipona will be included in what will be aired. Yes, Attorney?
Hello, Camer, I am joking. Hello, everyone. I'm the newly appointed public attorney's office and I'm serving, already serving the municipalities of Boac, Gason, and Mugpog. The public attorney's office is always open for you, most especially to the indigent and underrepresented and marginalized citizens of the province of Marinduke. We are located at the Bulwaga Hall of Justice beside the province, province, building of the provincial, the building of provincial capital. We are always welcome and we are always happy to serve you.
Okay, salamat Attorney and last na, there may be times when some of our staff may be coordinating closely or working closely with Pau for legislative research in aid of our legislative function. I hope that partnership can, can, can continue. So, malaking tulung din po kasi sa Sanggunyang Palalawigan, 'yung kanilang exposure sa Pau in doing our legislative research in aid of legislation. Thank you.
Yes po.
So, meron pa?
I forgot to mention that our services are for free po. We are providing free notarial services, legal advices, and court case representation. And also, we have non-judicial activities like giving seminars to every barangays. And also, we also have outreach to barangays also po.
Okay, maraming salamat po ulit. So, kung wala na po na iba pang ipaparating ating mga kasama, maraming salamat Attorney Estipona. And you are excused, but before that, we have a birthday celebrator today. And I'm sure she won't mind inviting you to join us for lunch maya-maya.
Thank you po. I would like to personally extend my greetings po. Happy birthday po, Bokan.
So, Attorney Estipona, our resource person is excused.
Madam Presiding Officer, I move that we close the question hour.
May we just request our OVG staff to kindly assist Attorney Estipona? Okay, shall we continue, Honorable Leva?
Yes, Madam Presiding Officer, we now go to the privilege hour. Ah, Madam Presiding Officer, the Honorable Valdomero El Limpiada abailed of the privilege hour to discuss the perennial problem on stray dogs in the streets and the threats to it, to public, and the concerns on the safety of the road going to Balalakan during heavy rains. May I ask that we recognize the honorable gentleman from the municipality of Mugpog?
The gentleman from Mugpog and at the same time, our honorable representative of the Liga ng Mga Barangay is recognized.
First time. At may susunod pa po.
Yan, mas makikita ka ng maliwanag dyan, Bokal, Bokal Limpiada.
To the Honorable Presiding Officer and members of the honorable chamber, good morning to all of you. I stand there this morning to bring the attention of the Sanggunyang Palalawigan for possible legislative action or intervention on the two subjects. First, on the perennial problem on stray dogs. We are probably aware that the dogs roaming in the street is still remains a problem. Many of the reported motorcycle accidents on the roads are caused by stray dogs, which is already an alarming concern. Another is the stray dog caused the scattering of garbage and dog pups in the streets. The primary concern is that stray dogs are usually unvaccinated and may cause rabies infection to the beaten individuals who are responsible. Republic Act Number 9482 or the Anti-Rabies Act of 2007 provides the following. Section 5, Responsibilities of Pet Owner. All pet owners shall be required to: Letter A, have their dog regularly vaccinated against rabies and maintain a registration card which shall contain all vaccination conducted on their dog for accurate record purposes. Letter B, submit their dogs for mandatory registration. Letter C, maintain control over their dog and not allow it to roam the streets or any public place without a leash. Letter D, be a responsible owner by providing their dog with proper grooming adequate food and clean shelter. Letter E, within 24 hours, report immediately in any dog biting incident to the concerned officials for investigation or for any appropriate action and place such dog under observation by government or private veterinarian. Letter F, assist the dog bite victims immediately and shoulder the medical expenses incurred in other incidental expenses relative to the victim's injuries. Section 7, Responsibilities of the LGOs. LGOs and their respective localities shall: Number 1, ensure that all dogs are properly immunized, registered, and issue the corresponding dog tag for every immunized and registered dog. Number 2, strictly enforce dog impounding activities and field control to eliminate stray dogs. Number 3, ensure that dogs are loose or confined within the premises of the owner's house or owner's pen surroundings. Number 4, allocate funds to augment the implementation of the National Rabies Prevention and Control Program, particularly in the financing of supplies in human and dog vaccines needed for immunization. Number 5, ensure the enforcement of Section 6 of Republic Act Number 8485 or the Animal Welfare Act of 1998. Number 6, enact additional local ordinances that will support the National Rabies Prevention and Control Program that should include the regulation of treatment locally known as Tandok. Number 7- Number 7, prohibit the trade of dogs for meat. Number 8, with respect to cities and first-class municipalities, establish and maintain a dog pound where impounded dogs shall be kept in accordance with Section 9 herein, provided that the other municipalities shall on their own establishing a dog pound or opt to share the expense of establishing and maintaining a dog pound with other adjoining municipalities and/or with private animal shelters and control facilities. Number 9, prohibit the use of electrocution as a euthanasia procedure. Number 10, appoint a veterinarian and establish a veterinary office in every province, city, and first-class municipality, provided that the other municipalities shall on their own opt to share the expense of having a veterinary office and among others. Relative thereto, the DLGE should memorandum circular number 2021-020 regarding the LGU implementation of Republic Act number 9482 or the Anti-Rabies Act of 2007, reiterating its previously issued memorandum circulars number 2011-30 and 2014-56 pertaining to the same subject matter. Also, there is provincial ordinance number 38 is a series of 2002 or the stray animals rabies control ordinance that was adopted by the Sanggulang Panlalawigan on February 1, 2002. Under Section 4 thereof, it is stated that as general rule, no person shall be allowed to own, raise, or breed dogs without registering their pets to the Sanggulang barangay through the barangay secretary. For this purpose, all dogs with ages 3 months and above shall be properly registered at the said office by their legitimate custodians and pay the necessary cost thereof through the barangay treasurer. Copy of the registration shall be furnished to the municipal health office, municipal agriculture office, and the provincial veterinary office. My colleagues, there are sufficient laws that should help prevent the stray dogs and other animals on the street. And there are also corresponding penalties for those who are found violating the said laws. But where seems to be the problem? Number 1, there are no impounding facilities in the province. Number 2, if there is, who will should shoulder the provisional expenses such as the foods, water, medicine, etc., as well as the manpower requirements. Number 3, there seems to be no municipal veterinarian. Being appointed in the municipalities, there is only one, a provincial veterinarian. Republic Act number 9482 and provincial ordinance number 38 series of 2022 are not strictly being implemented. And my second concern is the concern of the safety of the road going to Balanakan during heavy rains. My fellow members of the board, our province is prone to natural weather disturbances. Currently, we are experiencing Amihan or the Southeast Monsoon, which causes frequent heavenly rainfall and humid weather. In the past days or even weeks, we are experiencing continuous rainfalls, which are sometimes heavy, that causes landslides in some roads in the province, including that going to Balanakan. This causes the blockage of road leading to the main door of the province, which is the Balanakan port. What is more concerning is this, it causes dangers and threats to the motorists in the nearby communities. My fellow members, it can be observed that the landslides in the roadside are due to lack of pre-prep or other erosion protection structure. Another is that the line canals usually clog or congested, thereby impending the flow of water which overflows to the top of the roads causing mud flows. Considering that the said roads are classified as national roads, this representation suggests that the matter be brought to the attention of the DPWOH for appropriate action. And finally, may this representation recommend to this honorable body that the matters in race be referred to the concerned committees for further study in appropriate legislative action. Thank you very much.
Maraming maraming salamat po sa ating kasama, Bokal Baldo Merro Limpiada for providing, for raising two important subject matters, providing important context and background and well researched. Any other, any, any interpolation? Yes, Honorable Caballes?
Thank you po, Madam Presiding Officer. First of all, gusto ko lang po mag-agree with the sentiments raised by our honorable Bokal Balimpiada. And just to give context, and just to give context and an update to our colleagues, that particular matter specifically the matter or the problems arising from the stray dogs, this is part of our legislative agenda. This was specifically highlighted by me during, as my, one of my legislative agenda during our meetings and different conferences that we attended. And just to give everyone an update, we're already crafting an ordinance that will address this problem as it is, as this matter was also referred to my committee in the public safety. So the next question is, why is it taking a considerable time for it to be drafted? Because there are problems both in, there are both technical problems when it comes to legislation. Because first of all, there is a problem with, there is a challenge when it comes to the Animal Welfare Code, because we have to tread lightly or carefully. Because one wrong provision and our colleagues at the Provincial Veterinary Office and our law enforcement officers and even our barangay officials will be subject to liability. Because personally, I can attest to the challenges that are being faced by our local officials, particularly the provincial vet, because they are, they were already subject to a few civil suits, particularly civil and criminal and administrative suits or complaints. Because unfortunately, one of, some of our kababayans in Marinduke who are supposed to be the responsible owners of these dogs are the ones who end up filing administrative and criminal complaints for their responsibility. So we are taking our, we are being careful on how we are drafting this proposed legislation so that our, the officers or the public officials who will be implementing this legislation will be, will also be protected from, from future complaints and civil, criminal, and administrative suits. So Bokal, I would just like to assure Bokal Bal that it is already being addressed, at least on the legislative side of the problem. And so, and with the extensive work with the provincial vet and with the legislation that we are currently crafting, I think at least 50% will, will come, 50% of the work will come from the barangays. And with that added responsibility, we are also proposing an additional financial aid to the barangays so that, part of the proposals of that legislation is to have an impound center. And because we don't have enough resources and funds, we will cluster at least 3 barangays to have an impound center for dogs and with the added financial appropriation or assistance to the barangays so that they will be able to operate such. And that will surely help in the enforcement of our soon-to-be-amended Anti-Rabies Law, at least in the local level and the other concerns of the barangay, the LGU, and the provincial. Because the second concern I have, because, the second concern I have is that Marinduke used to be a zero rabies province. We were recognized nationally. We were the subject of different commendations and several awards. However, the problem that we're currently having is because, yun nga ni po 'yung provincial vet natin na ininademanda na ng ilang beses dahil sa pag-enforce ng batas natin. So I think part of our problem or part of the solution that we have is the political will to enforce our laws. Na kahit may magalit, na sa totoo lang naman na madalas 'yung nagagalit ay 'yung mga irresponsableng pet owners rin naman na hindi nasunod sa batas. Yun 'yung problema natin na kailangan natin kaharapan, naharap. So we need protection, we need to protect our local officials who will enforce these laws dahil maganda nga ni na masaya lahat na wala nagreklamo, walang nahuhuli. Pero ang tayo rin na may nagasuffer dahil pakalat-kalat 'yung mga aso at mga kababayan rin naman natin 'yung nadidiskrasya. So yun lang po, Madam Presiding Officer.
Okay, thank you, Honorable Caballes. Is that an interpolation, Honorable Tres Mangkukang?
Another...
Or additional information?
Additional information, Madam.
Okay, but it would be good to focus on interpolation because we will refer it anyway to concerned committees. So what is the additional information? Yes?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Honorable Mangkukang first, then we'll have the reply of Honorable Limpiada.
Tunay nga po ang tinura ng ating gentleman from Mugpog na ito ay isa na sa pinaka malalang problema ng ating lalawigan. Ang mga nakakalat na mga asong gala sa kaliwa. Una, sanhi ng aksidente, vehicular accident, particularly sa motor. At ang dami per record, ang dami po nakadatos. Pangalawa, kinakalat ang mga basura sa lansangan kung saan. Pangatlo, gigiging sanhi ng noise pollution, lalo na sa gabi. Lalo na kung nagkakasama-sama ang grupo ng mga aso. Sunod, ito ay threat sa ating mga kabataan, lalo na sa mga batang pastit kung saan ay napakalaki ng chance na sila ay makagat nitong mga asong gala. Madam Presiding Officer, during the executive legislative agenda discussions held in Luxent Hotel, sinabi ko po at isa sa aking iniain na legislative agenda ay magkaroon tayo ng isang ordinan sa kung saan bumuo ang, magkaroon at bumuo ang pamalang panlalawigan ng isang animal shelter, provincial animal shelter. Na kung saan ay dito ilalagak ang mga hayop na gala, particularly ang aso. At sinabi rin natin na maraming mga animal welfare foundation locally and abroad na sumosporta sa ganitong klase ng adikain. So balit hindi ito nakasama at naipasa doon sa ating mga babalangkasin na legislative agenda for this term. I think, Madam Chair, ito ay isa sa magandang solusyon at pinaka, pinaka-safe, ano po, na wala tayong, wala tayong batas na sasalungatin at walang taong magagalit. So balit, kailangan lang talaga dito ng sapat na pananalapi upang magawa natin ang stray animal shelter dito sa ating lalawigan. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you very much, Honorable Mangkukang for additional information. Any, any reply before the Presiding Officer make a decision on proper disposition? Honorable Baldo Merro Limpiada first, then Honorable Leva?
I want to cite first the provincial ordinance number 38 series of 2002 dun sa po sa all personnel directly involved sa section 13. In the redaction campaign, shall be provided by the local government unit concerned with pre-exposure shot upon the rabies vaccine. This include dog catchers, vaccinators, veterinarian personnel who have access in the operation. Section 14, 'yung penalty clause. Any violation of this order shall be meted fine of 500 pesos for the first-time offender, 1,000 pesos for second-time offender, 2,500 pesos third-time offender and proceed met the discretion of the court. Fine shall be shared or by the barangay, the municipality in the province on 20%, 40%, and 40% basis respectively. Dog catchers will be paid 100 pesos per dog to be paid for the barangay, for their share. So Madam Chair, sinishare ko po ito 'yung ginawa po ng provincial ordinance series of 2002. So as na maprobide natin ang mga barangay officials tungkol po dito sa mga bagay na ito, so as na hindi sila mademanda or mabalikan po ng, na reklamo ng mga may-ari. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, that is actually the query of the Presiding Officer with regard to the first subject matter. Una, claro, that there, with regard to legislation, there is an existing legislation, an ordinance at the provincial level. Kaya nga po, ang, kung ang may, ano pa ang gaps dito sa policy and at the same time, ano 'yung status ng implementation, siguro po doon magkakaiba-iba. So ang, ang first query ng Presiding Officer, Honorable Limpiada, is what is, aside from being referred to concerned committee, kasi legislative measure na naman din ang ending natin ito. So ano pa pong ibang requested or suggested action na naisponin 'yung hilingin? Yes, Honorable Limpiada?
Ongoing po 'yung aming pong paghuli ng aso sa barangay Balanakan. The problem there, 'yung mga hindi nila, 'yung hindi tinutubos ng may-ari. So hindi po naka-state dito kung ano po 'yung dating, 'yung mga dapat gawin sa implementing roles. Paano po kung 3 times na, 3 days na pong, 5 days, 1 week? That is, that is the problem ng barangay. Kami magpapakain, kami nagintindi, dahil pag hindi namin tinintindi, pwede kami balikan ang demanda rito.
Okay po, so definitely the committee can, can work on the, the policy gap. Yes, Honorable Leva?
Madam Chair, this is not an interpolation but more of a manifestation.
Proceed, Honorable.
At the outset, I would like to commend the good gentleman from the municipality of Mugpog representing the Liga ng Mga Barangay for this well-served privileged speech. Because what captured my mind, Madam Chair, is the provision of Republic Act 9482 with regards to the duty of the LGUs to enact additional local ordinance that will support the National Rabies Prevention and Control Act that should also include the regulation of treatment, of treatment locally known as Tandok. It's very prevalent in the province, Madam Chair, that instead of going to the hospital, to the doctor, ay nagkapasip sip na lang po sila sa Tandok. Kaya, we do not know how a patient is assured of going to this Tandok, ah, di ko alam kung anong tawag sa kanila.
Magtatandok?
Oo, kasi po, I have a personal experience na I accompanied friend to a Tandok, magtatandok in Benavista. Nagkapatandok namang po siya sa, sa Yurik Asid. Pero may subong bata na nakagat ng aso na imbis po nadalhin po sa, sa ospital, ay inapasip sip po 'yung sugat doon sa, ano at, pagkaano ay tapos na raw po yun. Paano po kung hindi totoo or hindi manatanggal 'yung rabies nun sa, ano eh, it's very, marami po ang naniniwala na totoong nakakagaling. But unfortunately, siguro at this time ay wala pang adverse effect, but later on, we do not know. So I would like to suggest that to the committee that to which this privileged speech of the Honorable Limpiada will be referred to, to also give attention to the paragraph 6, section 7 of the Anti-Rabies Act, which mandates us also to regulate this treatment, a local treatment called Tandok.
Thank you, Honorable Leva, for that additional recommendation. With that, the first subject matter of the privileged speech of Honorable Limpiada is being formally referred to the Committee on Peace and Order. And the chairperson already updated us of the ongoing... And the chairperson already updated us of the ongoing initiative. So, the additional information and disposition being requested from the privileged speech of Bokal Limpiada, from the manifestation of Honorable Mangkukang, as well as the additional recommendation of Honorable Jojo Leva is likewise being referred. With regard to the second subject matter, the massive erosion along national road, it is being referred formally to the Committee on Public Works and Engineering. And at the same time, pending the disposition of the committee requesting the assistance of the secretary to kindly make the proper letter communication to DPWH through the Ibertoliano, copy furnished that portion of the privileged speech of Honorable Limpiada with particular request in advance. On the information on what are the actions being undertaken by the... We are assuming that there are initiatives to address it. So, we will just request updated information on what actions are already being initiated by the DPWH to address the problems, not just in, not just in the Balanakan area, but also in areas with similar situation. And informing also, informing further that this particular item has been referred formally to the Committee on, Committee on Public Works and Infrastructure. So, they are, they have advanced knowledge that anytime the committee may call for their representation in the committee hearing. But we make an advance communication already. Yes, Honorable Leva?
Madam Chair, with regards to the letter to the district engineer, can also furnish a copy of that letter, the regional director? Because, Madam Chair, apparently during the discussion that we had last Wednesday, projects amounting to 100 million and above are within the jurisdiction of the regional office. And they do not know, they do not even have a little iota of knowledge of that project because this regional office is not reporting to them, apparently because according to them, they are of much higher level than them. Kaya, marami na po pala tayong projects, not that district engineering office do not know because they are being implemented by the regional office. And as a consequence of that information, Madam Chair, next week, we have opted to invite the regional engineer of the DPWH with regards to the projects being implemented by the regional office. More, the projects on the national roads implementation are more, more of them are being implemented by the regional office rather than the district office, Madam Chair. So, it's very timely that the privileged speech of the Honorable Limpiada was rendered today and it will be part of the committee meeting that will be conducted by the committee wherein the regional, the engineer assigned in the province of Barinduke will be invited.
So, what is the recommendation of the floor leader? Do we have to make an advance communication?
Yes.
Okay.
We will...
Only copy furnish the regional director?
Can we have as a same, same communication addressed to the regional director?
Separate.
Separate, Madam Chair. And parallel to that, we will conduct a committee hearing with the regional engineers and the district engineers as the invitees, Madam Chair.
So, that will serve as an advance notice to the, to the district office and regional office. And the Presiding Officer will not mind signing the letter if deemed necessary. Thank you, so can we close now the, another is another?
Wala na po. Madam Presiding Officer, I move that we close the privilege hour.
The privilege hour is closed.
For the calendar of business, for the unfinished business, we don't have any. For the business for the day, first item in the business for the day is the item number three of the messages and correspondence from the governor, the request for the suspension of section 93 of Resolution Number 525, series of 2014. May I ask to recognize the chairperson of the committee on Ways and Means?
Honorable Mangol is recognized to sponsor? Item number three in the correspondence from the governor. Yes, Honorable Mangol?
I move for the approval of a resolution suspending section 93 of Resolution Number 525, series of 2014, imposing and collecting fees and charges for the use of the Barinduke Expo Center and Morion Arena, as move, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Just a final clarification, di ko lang ma-review. Is there a particular period of time within which the suspension will be effective?
During the duration of the expo.
So, we need not specify that it will be for this calendar year?
For calendar, for this year.
Year, as a reference, maybe we need to include that in the resolution? Specific dates within which the, the suspension will take effect?
Yes.
Okay, so there is a motion, would you like to reiterate your motion, Honorable Mangol?
Yes, Madam Chair?
Ano na? Madam Chair, ang magasimula yata po yun ay February 25, oh, 21, up to Hollywood.
So, sige po.
I present it na po the, po the month of February, March, and April.
Okay. Okay po.
Three months.
Okay, so again, Honorable Mangol?
May I reiterate the title of the resolution? A resolution suspending section 93 of Resolution Number 525, series of 2014, imposing and collecting fees and charges for the use of Barinduke Expo Center and Morion Arena from the period of February until March, April, Madam Chair, 2023, Madam Chair. Thank you po.
Is there any second to the motion of Honorable Mangol, duly seconded by Honorable Dani Red, Honorable Mercy Rehano? Is there any objection? The Chair hears none, thus the resolution suspending section 93 of Resolution Number 525, series of 2014, imposing and collecting fees and charges for the use of Barinduke Expo Center and Morion Arena from February to April 2023 is now adopted.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, may I move for a five-minute suspension? Resess.
Five minutes recess is declared.
Okay, Madam Presiding Officer, may this representation be recognized?
Proceed, Honorable Leva.
Madam Presiding Officer, may I move for adoption of a resolution declaring municipal ordinance number 2022-352 of the municipality of Wak, entitled "An Ordinance Posthumally Confering the Gawad Bokenyo sa Lingurang Pampamahalan Award to Former Barinduke Governor Jose Antonio Nye Bakaryon, Whose Leadership and Governance Inspired and Institutionalized Some of the Best Practices in Local Governments, Recognizing His Accomplishments and Legacy to the Province of Barinduke and to the Municipality of Wak and for Other Related Purposes as Within the Prescribed Power of the Sangguniang Bayan of Wak to Enact." I so move.
There is a motion, any second to the motion, duly seconded by Honorable Mercy Rehano? Any objection? The Chair hears none, thus the resolution declaring municipal ordinance number 2022-352 of the municipality of Wak, entitled "Ordinance Posthumously Confering the Gawad Bokenyo sa Lingurang Pampamahalan Award to Former Barinduke Governor Jose Antonio Nye Bakaryon, Whose Leadership and Governance Inspired and Institutionalized Some of the Best Practices in the Local Governments, Recognizing His Accomplishments and Legacy to the Province of Barinduke and to the Municipality of Wak and for Other Related Purposes, is now declared valid, operative, and within the authority of the said LGU to enact."
Madam Presiding Officer, may I move for a resolution declaring municipal ordinance number 272, series of 2023, of the municipality of Benavista, entitled "As an Ordinance Deferring the Implementation of Article B Local Civil Registry Fees of Municipal Ordinance Number 227-12017, entitled "2017 Revised Revenue Code of the Municipality of Benavista, Barinduke in Celebration of the Kasala ng Bayan on February 14, as Within the Prescribed Power of the Sangguniang Bayan of Benavista to Enact." I so move.
Any second to the motion, duly seconded by Honorable Cabalias, Honorable Neril Mangol? Any objection? The Chair hears none, thus the resolution declaring municipal ordinance number 272, series of 2023, of the municipality of Benavista, entitled "Ordinance Deferring the Implementation of Article B Local Civil Registry Fees of Municipal Ordinance Number 227-2017, entitled "2017 Revised Revenue Code of the Municipality of Benavista, Barinduke, in Celebration of the Kasala ng Bayan on February 14, 2023," is now approved.
Madam Presiding Officer, may I ask to recognize the chairperson of the committee on appropriation for the proposed Resolution Number 2023-147 and proposed Resolution Number 2023-148?
Okay, Honorable Cabalias is recognized.
The Presiding Officer, this representation formally moves for the approval of a resolution appropriating the total amount of 14,310,820 pesos for the various MOE accounts in the office of the SP Legislative, the Presiding Officer.
Any second to the motion, duly seconded by Honorable Limpiada, Honorable Red? Any objection? The Chair hears none, thus the resolution approving appropriation of 14,310,820 pesos for the various MOE accounts in the office of the SP Legislative is now approved. Yes, Honorable Cabalias?
Madam Presiding Officer, again I move for the approval of a resolution appropriating the total amount of 1,508,150 pesos for various MOE accounts and 340,000 for various capital outlay accounts in the office of the SP Secretariat.
Any second to the motion, duly seconded by Honorable Rehano, Honorable Red? Any objection? The Chair hears none, thus the resolution appropriating the total amount of 1,508,150 pesos for various MOE accounts and 340,000 pesos for various capital outlay accounts in the office of the SP Secretariat is now approved.
Madam Presiding Officer, may I ask that we recognize the chairperson of the Committee on Environment Protection and Human Ecology for accompanying Resolution of the Committee Report Number 80-2023, page 9?
Honorable Mangkukang is recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Presiding Officer. This representation formally moves for the passage of a resolution. A resolution, entitled a resolution authorizing the Honorable Governor Presbitero J. Velasco Jr. to file an application via VNR Penro Barinduke for the titling of 4.3305 hectares and 3.1352 hectares of land located in barangays of San Miguel, Moralion, and Santol in the municipality of Wak reclaimed from the Wak River bed by allusion and/or avulsion without prejudice to the continuous negotiation with the municipality of Wak. I so move, Madam Chair.
Is there any second to the motion by Honorable Mangkukang? Duly seconded by Honorable Red, any objection? The Chair hears none, thus a resolution granting authority to Honorable Governor Presbitero Velasco Jr. to file an application for and in behalf of the province of Barinduke with VNR Penro Barinduke for the titling of 4.3305 hectares and 3.1352 hectares of land located in barangays San Miguel, Moralion, and Santol in the municipality of Wak for the reclaim reclaimed from Wak River bed by allusion and/or avulsion without prejudice to the continuous negotiation and discussion with the municipality of Wak is now approved.
And another resolution, Madam Chair? A resolution entitled "Authorizing the Honorable Governor Presbitero J. Velasco Jr. to request for presidential proclamation and/or enactment of law by Congress for the acquisition of the 4.3305 hectares and 3.1352 hectares of land located in barangays of San Miguel, Moralion, and Santol in the municipality of Wak, Barinduke reclaimed from the Wak River bed by allusion and/or avulsion." I so move, Madam Chair.
Without prejudice to continuous negotiation, okay.
Di na po kasama yun, Madam Chair.
May I seek for an amendment that we include the word "without prejudice to the continuous negotiation with the municipality of Wak"?
Even in the title, okay. Okay, is there any second to the motion by Honorable Mangkukang? Seconded by Honorable Cabalias, Bokal Office Mercado, Bokal Rosales? Any object, Bokal Dani Red? Any objection? The Chair hears none, thus the resolution granting authority to Honorable Governor Presbitero Velasco Jr. to request for and in behalf of the provincial government of Barinduke for a presidential proclamation, for the issuance of presidential proclamation or enactment of law by Congress for the acquisition by the provincial government of the 3 point, 4.3305 hectares and 3.1352 hectares of land located in barangays San Miguel, Moralion, and Santol in the municipality of Wak reclaimed from the Wak River bed by allusion and/or avulsion without prejudice to continuous discussion, negotiation with the municipality of Wak is now approved.
Madam Presiding Officer, may I ask that we recognize the chairperson of the Committee on Appropriations for accompanying resolutions under Committee Report Number 81-2023, page 9?
The sponsoring committee chair is recognized, Honorable Cabalias.
The Presiding Officer, this representation formally files an omnibus motion for the adoption of the following resolutions. Number one, resolution appropriating the total amount of 9,901,000 pesos Number one, resolution appropriating the total amount of 9,901,000 pesos for various MOE accounts under the Office of the Provincial Disaster Risk Reduction and Management Office, subject to the availability of funds. Number two, a resolution appropriating the amount of 3 million pesos for the purchase of a brand-new service vehicle for use by the Provincial Engineering Office for monitoring and evaluation of various programs and projects and other related activities, subject to availability of funds. Number three, resolution appropriating the total amount of 4,500,000 pesos for various MOE accounts under the Provincial Engineering Office, subject to availability of funds, further subject to the following conditions: Submission of the actual funding requirement of the PEO for the whole year minus what has already been provided in the appropriation ordinance. And number two, there should be a provision that the PEO should have a stockpile of all the spare parts that are repeatedly being used by their office. Number four, a resolution appropriating the amount of 3 million pesos for the following MOE accounts under the Provincial Engineering Office, subject to the availability of funds. Number five, a resolution granting honorarium the amount of 10,000 pesos per month to Attorney Shermella Estipona, the newly-appointed Public Attorney One in the Public Attorney's Office, effective upon her appointment. And number six, a resolution appropriating the total amount of 13,800 pesos for various MOE accounts and capital accounts under the Provincial Tourism and Cultural Office, subject to availability of funds. Number seven, a resolution appropriating the amount of 850,000 pesos for the grant of financial assistance to all accredited civil service organizations in the Province of Marinduke, pursuant to SP Resolution Number 124 Series of 2022 with the minor amendment, I guess, of our old present phrase na paborita ng Budget Officer, with subject to the availability of funds. And then, number eight, resolution appropriating the total amount of 3 million pesos for various MOE accounts under the office... Sorry, resolution appropriating the total amount of 5 million pesos for various MOE accounts under the Office of the Vice Governor. Number nine, resolution declaring appropriation ordinance Number 3 Series of 2022 authorizing the CY 2022 General Fund Supplemental Budget Number 3 of the Municipality of Torrijos, Marinduke, involving an appropriation of 4,873,732 pesos and 88 centavos and 10,000 pesos for general fund proper in operation of the local economic enterprise, respectively, operative in its entirety, subject to the conditions, comments, and findings of the Provincial Budget Officer. Assume move, Madam Presiding Officer.
There is an omnibus motion moved by the Chairperson of the Committee on Appropriation, Honorable Cabalias, for the adoption of nine resolutions. Is there any second to the motion? Duly seconded by Honorable Mangol, Honorable Danny Red, Honorable Aurelio Leva? Is there any objection? The Chair hears none, thus, the omnibus motion introduced by Honorable Cabalias is approved. The following resolutions are hereby approved. Resolutions appropriating the total amount of 9,901,000 pesos for various MOE accounts under the Provincial Disaster Risk and Reduction Management Office, subject to availability of funds. Resolution appropriating the amount of 3 million pesos for the purchase of brand-new service vehicle for the use by the Provincial Engineering Office. Resolution appropriating 4,500,000 pesos for various MOE accounts under the Provincial Engineering Office, subject to availability of funds. Resolution appropriating the amount of 3 million pesos for the following MO... for the various MOE accounts under the Provincial Engineering Office, subject to availability of funds. Resolution granting 10,000 pesos honorarium per month to Attorney Shermella Estipona. Resolution appropriating the total amount of 13 million pesos for various MOE accounts and capital accounts under the Provincial Tourism and Cultural Office, subject to availability of funds. Resolution appropriating the amount of 850,000 pesos for the grant of financial assistance to all accredited civil society organizations in the Province of Marinduke as pursuant to Resolution Number 124 Series of 2022. Resolution appropriating 5 million pesos for various MOE accounts under the Office of the Vice Governor. Resolution declaring appropriation ordinance Number 3 Series of 2022 authorizing calendar year 2022 General Fund Supplemental Budget Number 3 in the amount of 4,873,732 pesos and 88 cents and 10 million... 10,000 pesos for general fund proper, respectively, for the Municipality of Torrijos, subject to the comments and findings of the Provincial Budget Officer, are now approved.
Madam Presiding Officer, may this representation be recognized for the accompanying resolution of Committee Report Number 83-23? Madam Presiding Officer, may I move for an omnibus motion for the adoption of the following resolution? Resolution Number... Resolution declaring Municipal Ordinance Number 251 Series of 2022 of the Municipality of Santa Cruz entitled "An Ordinance Prohibiting the Entry, Sneaking, Using, and Carrying Any Forms of Controband Inside BGMP Jail's Facilities in the Municipality of Santa Cruz, Marinduke, as Beyond the Prescribed Power of the Sanggunian Bayan to enact." Resolution declaring Municipal Ordinance Number 255 Series of 2022 of the Municipality of Santa Cruz entitled "An Ordinance Prescribing the Rules and Regulations for the Issuance of Certification of Detention for Persons Deprived of Liberty Inmates Compried in the Bureau of Jail Management and Penology Magel in the Municipality of Santa Cruz, Marinduke, as Beyond the Prescribed Power of the Sanggunian Bayan to enact." And resolution declaring Municipal Ordinance Number 250 Series of 2022 of the Municipality of Santa Cruz entitled "An Ordinance Prohibiting Drone Operation Within 100-Meters Radius From the Bureau of Jail Management and Penology Magels in the Municipality of Santa Cruz, as Within the Prescribed Power of the Sanggunian Bayan to enact, subject to the Recommendation of the Joint Committee under Joint Committee Report Number 83 and further recommending to exercise prudence in the enactment of the said ordinance." I assume move.
In the implementation.
In the implementation of the said ordinance.
There is an omnibus motion from the... from Honorable Leva for the adoption... for... for... the adoption of a resolution covering... covering three municipal ordinance, says, from the Municipality of Santa Cruz, Municipality of...
Santa Cruz.
All, all from the Municipality of Santa Cruz. Is there any second to the motion with regard to the disposition? Duly seconded by Honorable Limpiada, Honorable Rehano, any objection? The Chair hears none, thus, the omnibus motion is approved. The resolution declaring Municipal Ordinance Number 251 Series of 2022 of the Municipality of Santa Cruz...
As beyond.
A resolution declaring Municipal Ordinance Number 251 Series of 2022 of the Municipality of Santa Cruz, as beyond the prescribed power of the said LGU to enact, is now approved. Likewise, the resolution declaring Municipal Ordinance Number 255 Series of 2022 of the Municipality of Santa Cruz is likewise declared as beyond the power of the said Sanggunian and LGU to enact. And the third resolution declaring Municipal Ordinance Number 250 Series of 2022 of the Municipality of Santa Cruz is being declared within the power of the said Sanggunian and LGU to enact, subject to the findings of the committee... of the findings in the committee report and with advice to exercise prudence in its implementation, is now approved.
Madam Presiding Officer, may I ask that we recognize the Chairperson of the Committee on Health and Nutrition for the accompanying resolution of the Committee Report Number 85 Series of 2023?
Yes, Honorable Din Din Office Mercado?
Thank you. I move for the approval of a resolution entitled "An Ordinance Providing Mechanisms for the Distribution and Use of Ion Fortified Rice in the Municipality of Benavista, Marinduke, Otherwise Known as Benavista Ion Fortified Rice Ordinance of 2022." I assume move, Mr. Presiding Officer.
There is a motion to adopt an or a resolution declaring Municipal Ordinance Number 269 Series of 2022 of the Municipality of Benavista as valid and with in the authority of the said LGU to enact. Any second to the motion? Duly seconded by Honorable Mangol, any objection? The Chair hears none, thus, the resolution declaring Municipal Ordinance Number 269 Series of 2022 of the Municipality of Benavista as valid operative and within the authority of the said LGU to enact, is now approved.
Madam Presiding Officer, may I ask to recognize the Chairperson of the Committee on Youth and Sports for the accompanying resolution of the Committee Report Number 86-23?
Honorable Rosales is recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Majority Leader. Proposed resolution declaring Municipal Ordinance Number 268 Series of 2022 of the Municipality of Benavista entitled "An Ordinance Protecting Minors from the Hazards of Driving Motor Vehicles and Penalizing Any Adult Person from Allowing, Consent, Inducing, and Directing a Minor to Drive Motor Vehicles Within the Municipal Jurisdiction of Benavista, Marinduke, and Providing Penalties for Violation thereof Beyond the Prescribed Power of the Sanggunian Bayan to enact."
Is there any second to the motion? Duly seconded by Honorable Rehano, Honorable Jojo Leva, any objection? The Chair hears none, thus, the resolution declaring Municipal Ordinance Number 268 Series of 2022 of the Municipality of Benavista is now declared beyond the prescribed powers of the said LGU to enact.
Madam Presiding Officer, may I ask that we recognize the Chairperson of the Committee on Energy and Public Utilities for the accompanying resolution of Committee Report Number 88-2023?
Yes, the Honorable Mangol is recognized.
Madam Chair, I move for the adoption of our resolution declaring Municipal Ordinance Number 267 Series 2022 of the Municipality of Benavista entitled "An Ordinance Injoining the Fifteen Barangay... barangays in the Local Government of Unit of Benavista, Marinduke, to Strictly Adopt and Implement RA 11361, Anti-Obstruction of Powerlands Act and RA 7832, Anti-Electricity and Electric Transmission Lines/Materials Production Act of 1994, and Providing Penalties thereof, Valid and Within the Power of the Sanggunian Bayan to enact." I assume move, Madam Chair.
Any second, duly seconded by Honorable Leva, Honorable Rehano, any objection? The Chair hears none, thus, the resolution declaring Municipal Ordinance Number 267 Series of 2022 of the Municipality of Benavista is now declared valid operative and within the authority of the said LGU to enact.
Madam Presiding Officer, that closes our business for the day. In our session for the day, we don't have any assigned business. We don't have any proposed ordinance and resolution for third and final reading.
Kung wala na po, yes, Honorable Leva?
Madam Presiding Officer, I move that we adjourn.
The session is adjourned.